Okay, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and call for a motion to enter back into regular session, please. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We just want to, for the record, state in executive session, we did discuss personnel matters and we also discussed threatening penalty litigation. We will now go back to the regular business listed on the agenda and we will go to approval of the minutes for February 22nd, 2012 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I will now call for approval of minutes for the February 16th, 2012 special meeting. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will now go to approval of the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. We will now go to approval of the consent agenda. A motion for approval? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or question? Seeing that all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will now go to public requests. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for two minutes on any subject not currently listed on the agenda, this would be the time to do so. Okay, thank you. We now will go to department requests and reports. Item number one will be department updates. Oh, if you raise your hand, sorry Cindy.
Oh, you don't mind Cindy, I know you can.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you Cindy. If you're going to do a department update, just maybe we could just kind of streamline it if you guys just want to sit in the front row in order of who's going to go next. That way we can just keep going. Ruben, you'll be next.
Okay, last commission meeting. I give you guys a little bit of heads up that it was going to be a little bit different format. I'm not sure I'm happy with this, but you can give me any comments or anything, but for February, we had a total of 79 animals. 69 of them came from Torrance County, four from Moriarty, six from Estancia. At the time of this report, there were still six in the shelter. The new thing is how we're categorizing these. We have 23 life exits, seven stray euthanases, and only one owner turnover euthanases. Based on the information that I received from some other agencies to break this out so it doesn't look like we have 48 euthanases and 25 life exits. The owner turnovers are ones that the public are actually coming in and requesting because their animals are injured or elderly. So you can see what a huge difference that makes, right? So I was kind of excited about that. Seven were euthanized in the shelter for medical reasons or behavior. They weren't deemed adoptable animals for one reason or another, whether it was an injury or something else. We have 70 dogs, nine cats. No bite cases for February. We have two full-time employees, one part-time employee at this time. We are hiring. We brought Johna Sadio in on January 10th and she's working out fabulously. We're still hitting about 5,000 views on our pet finders and our Facebook and our adopted pets. So that's really wonderful for us. And at this time, still just waiting to get, you know, some blueprints and things for the new building and moving forward with that. That's kind of all I have for you today. Any questions?
Any questions? I like the new report. It's very easy to understand. The other report was too, but it was, you know, it was a lot bigger, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A little aggressive. We just finished off two G.I.S. classes that I hosted here in T-Sat or Dispatch. That was very successful. I got really good reports on that from the students that were there. There were students from all over the state. They were extremely happy with the class that we hosted and they're looking forward to me doing this again. Home, I'm not sure about that yet. So it was very tough in a sense. And I just upgraded some new software. Still learning it.
Thank you, Ruben. I heard those classes were wonderful and that you really set a good standard for them. So we appreciate you doing that.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Your name is the county manager.
Good morning.
NITCA is the New Mexico Farmer Care Association. That's where we get our funding to do Medicaid enrollment. We went to a quarterly meeting a week ago and we were informed and are kind of excited that with the new healthcare initiative, they're going to utilize the framework that we use to enroll as the launch to that next year. It's in the works. There will be additional funding to provide that. So that's kind of a great thing for our program and the community. They expect to 90% of the state's population that's uninsured by 2015. So it's going to be a big project. Home visiting, we submitted our budget. It's the same as last year. We're good with that. We conducted interviews for new employees. DV, we're still working. On the response for RFP, I spoke to the state manager. We should hear him next day or two. They said nobody gets what they ask for, so we'll be negotiating for a future grant. Also, I was invited to attend the American Cancer Society. It was a luncheon, corporate luncheon, and they would like us to work kind of in the community to help organize a team to attend a walk in April. So we're looking at doing that. Our car seat program is averaging 10 car seats a month, which is really exciting. And I don't want to invite you to get our health and safety dress on the 20th floor. It's from 1 to 4 at the Civic Center in Moriarty.
Any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We should have all worn our logo shirt today.
Yes.
Okay, the report that I sent you for the end of February, for the general fund, it was 780,000. But I gave you an update. That's the report that I handed you now. That's as of today. The general fund is down to 588, 936, 45 if you look at the top. And then all the funds, you can look at the totals. The road department just get their money in and they don't know it yet, but the other wire hit today. So they got all their project monies in and so I know they're very happy so they can get, you know, their projects going. And the only thing that we've collected for up to date is on the very last page, you'll see undistributed tax current and undistributed tax delinquent. Those are taxes that we've collected. I put a tape on the bottom. The only part that will belong to us is half of that is 35,000. That'll go into the general fund because the other half is distribution for the schools and the city and all that. Now, there is another report that I handed to you and it's outstanding so that you can check with all the line items that how much money's in there. But then you can go to this report and for instance, on the general fund, there's still 15,000 that was outstanding as of today. But that doesn't mean if there's anything that hasn't been posted in account table, if there's anything that's going to be posted after today or today, that'll change that figure and that'll change the general fund also. Okay? And that's all I really have to report. We second half taxes again. We're hoping they'll come in pretty soon here in April and May and that'll change the general fund big time.
Well, thank you. Dorothy, are there any questions from the table? Thank you so very much. Thank you, Jen.
Morning, officials. County manager. I'd like to report first on the dropper communities program. We, along with the other members of the Substance Abuse Prevention Task Force, hosted the Spring Youth Leadership Summit at the Civic Center last week and it was a very successful summit. Michael Barker did most of the facilitation and the summit was centered on creation of social media and marketing for positive messaging. And so the kids actually worked with Michael to create a Facebook page with three separate groups and the topics were to work on substance abuse, bullying, and adolescent or teen pregnancy issues. And so that is up and running on Facebook and I would suggest that you, if any of you aren't Facebook aficionados, go to Facebook and take a look and respond when you have the opportunity. It was a very successful summit. Michael is a wonderful facilitator. So we were really happy to see him in operation as a member of the team. And next time, I would hope that he could all be there. April 23rd will be the annual Community Substance Abuse Forum. That will also be at the Civic Center. And we are going to be centering around the issue of prescription and over the counter drug abuse because that is beyond an emerging problem in our community. It is an epidemic problem throughout the country and throughout the state and is certainly increasing in incidence in our community. And so we really need our policymakers there as well as our provider network to help us brainstorm how we want to address this. And we will have some knowledgeable speakers on hand also. So the public is all invited to attend. We do registration and light breakfast from 8:30 to 9:00 and then the summit itself will run from 9:00 to 11:30. So if you can be there, please do. Yesterday, the, not yesterday, the day before yesterday, Billy Clark is the program manager for the teen outreach program, attended an all-day mandatory state training for TOP programs and the state adopted TOP program as a model. So she was in center today. It was basically reviewing the model itself, the program requirements, and designed to ensure fidelity to the model and some standardization of programs. So that took place. On the juvenile justice program, we have some not so good news and some relatively good news. The not so good news is for any of you that did not hear, the governor vetoed by line item the $490,000 capital outlay appropriation for a multi-purpose youth center. So that money is no longer on the pre-bill. So at least in court discretion. So we will begin to work on other strategies. There is a strategic planning committee meeting on this Thursday at the CYFD conference room. That will be from 12 to 1:00 or 1:30 at the very latest. And then the strategic planning committee will be making some decisions on moving forward. And there will be a full board meeting to which we invite all of you since we had talked about a joint meeting at our last commission meeting. And that will be on the 29th of this month at 12 noon in courtroom two at District Court. So if you can be there, that would be wonderful.
Did you say that was the 29th?
The 29th. And the good news is, we received an email letter from the Annie Casey Foundation and they have invited us to submit a letter of interest for participating in their initiative to reduce juvenile incarceration and to really look at some solutions to deepen programming. And so we are submitting the initial letter of interest by the 16th and that will be an email form act. And then by the end of the month, we will need to submit a full letter of interest explaining our program and what we are planning to do and how and why that fits with the Casey philosophy, their program and their priorities and also why we would be able to do data collection and analysis and be a full company partner of a national initiative. So we will be working on those initiatives. I did notice that the Torrance County Juvenile Justice Board request for a vehicle is later in the agenda. From the board's standpoint, I think we would prefer that this be withdrawn at this time until we have a more solidified agenda moving forward and a firm timeline, which we should validate a little for next month. And outstanding questions?
I'll start. Thank you, Pat, for your presentation. So the letter of invitation that was received from the Casey Foundation is what we needed to let us go ahead and put the letter of interest in then?
It is. It's a selective solicitation. So you must be invited to apply.
It's very positive. It's very positive, right?
Esther is over the moon.
Good. I don't have any further questions, Commissioner?
No.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Good morning, Patty.
Good morning.
You too.
Good morning, everyone. What I'm giving you is just a rough draft. I apologize. I don't have any of the final one done yet. Our notices of value are at the printer and they will be mailed out on March 30th and all property owners will have the 30 days until April 30th to come in for any exemptions or questions or any appealing evaluations. This is what we have put in. There's a lot of other, several other counties that are doing it already. And we put this insert in that'll be going out to all the taxpayers, the property owners with their notices of value. It will be in a canary yellow, so it will be very noticeable. And it simplifies all of the state statute jargon on the back of the notice of value that we have to put on there. So we think this will help. We think we'll get a lot more questions and participants, especially of the head household exemptions, any veterans exemptions, and the valuation freeze for the low income over 65 or low income disabled. So we're hoping this will help with, because those are the only ways per state statute that we can really do to help decrease any property tax values or, you know, to help them, to help our citizens and all the property owners of the county. So I just wanted you to see that. As soon as we get this, because I'm hoping that I will be able to put this in a letter form and it will be hopefully in our two local newspapers next week or week after. So that'll get a little more. Last year, we even went around the county and Mary Ann and I went out and put flyers up in places that we could, like in municipal buildings and any place that we could put whatever people could see that these are some of the things that they can apply for. Yeah, any way to help is that we can, you know, keeping the, keeping the property tax values down some. So I just wanted to share that with you and that's what we're doing. So April will be a very busy month for us with the protest period. And then there's also an affiliate, an assessor affiliate meeting in April. And on April 16th, they will be doing, the Property Tax Division will be down doing all this evaluation. And they do give you all a full report of that. It probably takes about 60 days before they get that report out because they send it out to, you know, they don't send it out until they do all 33 counties. And so it takes them about 60 days to get that information out on how we're doing. So that's all I have today. Any questions?
No.
I have one question, Betty. On the valuation freeze, is that something that a lot of residents in Torrance County utilize?
You know, and I just finished with what I have now and I haven't done a count yet. I think we just have about, probably about 100 of them. Not even 100. I know we have more every year. And that's one of the things that a lot of people don't know about. And that was one reason why we were putting this in there too. But that, and from a meeting I was at on Monday, yeah, on Monday, I was at a luncheon meeting and the cabinet secretary of the Veterans Affairs was there and his presentation showed that we have 2,102 veterans living in Torrance County. And I know, and I would say, I don't know how many of them are actually property owners and reside in their homes here in the county. But we have nowhere near that for veterans who are getting their $4,000 exemption or if they're 100% disabled, they're 100% disabled exemptions. And I don't know how to reach those either. I'm going to be talking to the cabinet secretary, at least get to his office, and ask them if there's something we can even give out to their different offices, you know, just statewide for something like this, an informational thing, so that they know to go to their county assessors to ask for and get their, I mean, their $4,000 exemption, for example, and then 100, especially the 100% disabled is where they don't pay the property tax. They only have to pay the soil conservation tax, which we're also getting rid of that too this year in this county at least. And so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of ways that we don't know. That's why we're just trying to get out as many ways as we can.
I think this is an excellent piece of information to mail out, especially the valuation freeze, because I know a lot of people that could benefit from that. So I'm just going to read it real quick. Valuation freeze, if you are 65 years or older or permanently disabled at any age and had a total household income of $32,000 or less in the prior tax year, you may qualify for a property valuation freeze for your residence. Application must be submitted along with proof of income and/or age and disability. Freezing your valuation will help minimize increased property taxes and you must reapply every year. I think that's going to really help educate when you send these out because you might have applied for it, but you may not know that you need to do it every year. So I think that's, that's really wonderful.
And one of the things we have done last year, and that's really helped too, and there are a couple of other counties that are doing that, and that's where we got the idea from, is that all the people that had had that freeze last year, we send out a reminder letter as soon as we get the new forms in January. And we send a letter with the new form telling them that, you know, it's time to reapply. Because of course, with head household and your veterans exemptions, once they're established on your account, you don't have to do anything about it anymore because they stay there as long as you own the property.
Do they have to come fill that, fill out that form here? Or like, could they have some blank forms maybe at the local VFW post that they could pick up there and, you know, encourage their members if they qualify? Or do they have to come get the blank form here?
Well, no, they have to get a certificate from the Department of Veterans Affairs with their DV.
214.
214, thank you. Remember that one. I apologize. But they have to get a certificate from them and then they bring it to us and we have to sign on the back of it. And, you know, to get that one set up. So, and that's, that's a good idea too, because we can put, we can put like this even with, at places like that. And you'll be getting a bunch of these. And like I said, this is just the draft, so it's not quite clean to do that. And I will get them out and I'll be putting it in boxes, to everybody's boxes, so you all can have them. And if you want to get more and make copies of them or put them anywhere you think or...
Even on your website?
And this form, we can put this on the website as well. Because we do have all the forms, all the applications for head household. And then of course, they are part of your notice of value as they are part of your, well, actually part of the tax bill too, because they talk about all of those things at tax time as well. On the army notice of value, you can tear off part of the notice of value and send it back in to us with an address change or that you want. They had a household or all of that, or you can work from that as well. So we just keep trying to educate because we did find over the years, and a lot of the counties are doing it now because a lot of people don't know. And it is difficult to read. Well, first of all, the print's so small, I can't read them very well, all the statute information. And then it is, it's, I'm sorry, it's kind of legal jargon and it's hard to understand, well, what does that mean? So that's why we tried to simplify this and we're trying to get it out a lot more.
Great. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Betty, before you sit down, I have to get some questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, where I have a better thought process. On a $1,000 exemption, I don't know, you have a $2,000 and a $4,000. On a $100,000 home, how much does that give you a discount on your taxes?
Your, the $2,000 exemption, it's around the $50 range.
Around $15?
Yeah.
Okay, around $4,000, 100 bucks?
About $100 on that. And then of course, the 100% disabled nets, it reduces their value completely.
Okay. I mean, these could be eligible qualified people that can drive and everything. They don't have to come in and redo theirs, but why do we, when somebody's 65 or somebody that's 100% disabled, why do they have to register every year when they may have difficulty in doing that when the others don't?
Okay. Well, what we're finding is the two main reasons is for that, having to do, because the rules could change, the amounts could change. On the back of the notice of value, on the back of the form for the low income, it says that at one time it was only $23,000 or less. And now it's $2,000 or less. So they, the rules can change and also your income could change.
Okay. So it's mainly based on the rules and the income of the entity?
Absolutely.
Not their disability or anything?
No, once, because you have your disability and that's, that's set was, it has to be social security or workman's comp disability. And once that is set, I guess you could theoretically lose that. I don't know social security and workman's comp rules. But that would be, as long as they're 100% they are 100% disabled, or whatever the rules are for that, under that, then that counts as disabled, and I guess that could even change. The biggest thing is, the legislature and who set up this whole thing, they could change the rules as to the amount of income, they could increase it or decrease it, that's, the legislature would be doing that. And then of course, each individual could have a change in, you know, somebody might be fortunate enough to win a lottery one year, so that would make them ineligible for this. And, or someone may have children move back in with them, or they move in with someone else, or they have to move in with someone, and so incomes could change, because it's the whole gross income of the household.
Okay.
So if you had a child, even, an adult child move back in with you or something, that would have kept it.
Okay.
So that's why it does have to be done every year. And unfortunately, as the elderly, you know, if someone were to pass away or something, that's why we do it every year as well, because if we don't have a response from anybody that had the year before, we follow up on them. We don't have that many, I don't think like in Burnley County, they can maybe do that, but we can follow up on them, and we found one the other day, because we were worrying, hadn't heard anything, and she hadn't responded, and then come to find out she'd been gone, she'd been gone wintering out of state, so she didn't get it, she didn't get it till just a couple of days ago. So that's kind of nice about a small county and a small community, because we can do that, we say, well, we haven't heard from so-and-so, does anybody know about them? And so we followed up on them.
Okay. Another my question is if they could either phone in, or do we follow up, you know, somebody, because you're not going to get younger, that's for sure. But I can see what they're thinking.
Right.
So thank you.
Yeah, but we do, like I said, we send out that letter now to remind them, they have to do it every year because of that, and then a lot of them will bring everything down with them, and we fill it all out together, and make copies for them and all of that, or, I mean, if we had to, if there was someone, we'd be more than happy to go out to somebody's home, we haven't had that request yet, but we would do that. Until we get so many of them, we try them all.
Thank you Betty.
Thank you.